Good evening and welcome to the October Regular Meeting of the Board. Joy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
And if you'd stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
We'll get started with recognitions and awards, but before we do that, I just have one quick housekeeping note to make that there is a change to the agenda and we'll have a second motion for executive session under Personnel Matters. So with that, I will turn it over to Maggie.
Good evening. Tonight is a really special night for our recognitions tonight. In addition to being able to recognize two outstanding staff members, we're also able to honor a very special group of people, the Alumni Association Wall of Honor recipients. So we're really excited about that. I'd like to ask Heather Skunover from Community Development and Ed Batsky Jr., President of the Olathe Alumni Association, to come forward to assist with these recognitions. To perpetuate our tradition of excellence and inspire current students, outstanding alumni are selected annually by the Olathe Public Schools Alumni Association for the Wall of Honor recognition. Alumni candidates must be graduates and have graduated at least 20 years prior to the nomination. Distinguished persons of honor are retirees or friends of the district, and recipients must have attained a high level of achievement in one of the following areas: personal and/or professional life, community or humanitarian service, or lifelong commitment to educational excellence. This year, the Alumni Association recognized three exceptional alumni and two distinguished persons of honor last night during a special Wall of Honor banquet. So, Wall of Honor recipients, I'm going to call you forward individually and then please stay up at the front for a big group photo at the end. Tonight, we're going to begin with Carlotta Belcher, John P. St. John Memorial High School, class of 1952. Carlotta has held many positions within our community, but she's probably best known and loved as the Story Lady from the Olathe Public Library. From 1981 to 2014, she was employed by the library as a storyteller, where she also played the piano and helped children find the books they wanted. She continues as a volunteer with the library by mending books, helping to organize and run the annual book sales, handing out free books to children, and assisting with the novelties. Carlotta has been an integral part of the Old Settlers Planning Committee for 50-plus years, and estimates put her volunteer hours at more than 3,000 since the 1970s. Congratulations to you. Our next honoree is Leroy Holman, John P. St. John Memorial High School, class of 1955. After graduating in 1955, Leroy enlisted in the U.S. Marine Corps and served in Japan, in Calcutta, India, as a Marine Guard for the American consulate, and in North Carolina, attaining the rank of Sergeant. He then enlisted in the Army Security Service and worked in a specialized security facility in Turkey. This led to his life's employment with the Central Intelligence Agency, beginning in 1963. During the Cold War, he worked with all forms of data that were passed and stored and repaired advanced cryptographic technology. After retiring, he was much sought after as a contractor and was employed by General Electric to work on defense contracts. Congratulations. Our next recipient is Ken Roberts, Olathe High School, class of 1963. Many of you may recognize Ken as a longtime Olathe educator and principal. His first principalship was at Countryside Elementary, and he later opened Black Bob and Heatherstone Elementary Schools, where he was principal for 17 and 12 years respectively. He retired with 39 years as an educator and 33 of those as a building principal, and as of 2018, he has the longest tenure of any Olathe principal. He has been heavily involved with Johnson County and Olathe Spelling Bees, has started outdoor education programs, and received numerous awards for his service. Congratulations, Ken. And next, we will recognize our Distinguished Person of Honor Awards, which started in 2012. And this award recognizes individuals who didn't graduate from the district but have provided exceptional support to the district for many years. And our first Distinguished Person of Honor goes to a very familiar face, our very own retired superintendent, Dr. Pat All. Coming to Olathe in 1979 after teaching in the Shawnee Mission District, Pat began her career here as an assistant principal at Olathe High School. She served as principal at Oregon Trail Junior High and Olathe South High School. Her 31 years in key leadership positions included Director of Secondary Education, Executive Director of Education and Technology, Assistant Superintendent, and Deputy Superintendent. She served as superintendent for five years and again as interim superintendent for one year. She helped implement the 21st Century and Avid programs, as well as the configuration of our secondary schools to grades nine through 12 for high school and six through eight for middle school. And in addition to her mark on the district, she continues to remain active in numerous community boards and serves all over our community. So congratulations to you. And last, but certainly not least, we have longtime library media specialist and district energy manager, Bob Portman. Bob taught elementary physical education in the Shawnee Mission School District before coming to Olathe, where he was library media specialist at Westview, Central, Tomahawk, and Briarwood Elementary Schools, up until 1992, where he was the district's energy manager until his retirement in 2010. He was instrumental in Olathe's sesquicentennial celebration and is currently very involved with the Olathe Historical Society, having served as president and a member of several of its boards. He is the historian for the Alumni Association, is also deeply involved in getting Olathe yearbooks online for better preservation and viewing by our community. Congratulations, Bob. Congratulations to all of our Wall of Honor recipients. Let's give them another round of applause. For our next recognition, I'd like to ask Frontier Trail Principal, Dr. Rod Smith, to come forward, along with Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, Dr. Jim McMullin. The Kansas Association of Secondary School Principals has recognized Frontier Trail Middle School Principal, Rod Smith, with the Middle School Principal of the Year. This award recognizes outstanding principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students, as well as demonstrating exemplary contributions to the profession. Each year, the state winners are submitted for consideration to the National Principal of the Year, so congratulations and best of luck. And you have some pretty special guests here. Would you like to introduce your guests here today?
Yeah, I would. My wife, Chris, here, my mom and dad, Ava and Les Smith, and my brother Randy, good friend of mine, Bill Clare, so thanks for coming tonight.
And our final recognition for the night is for our very own John Hutchison. You have to stand up now. Deputy Superintendent of Business and Operations. John received the International Eagle Award from the Association of School Business Officials International, and this award is the highest honor among school business officials. As recipient of the International Eagle Award, he'll receive a $5,000 scholarship to present to a high school student of his choice, and he was formally recognized at the ASBO International Annual Meeting in Florida. Congratulations, John. Not true, not true, but that includes our recognition setting.
Thank you, Maggie. Public comments, it's next on the agenda?
All right. At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individuals limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium in the front of the room and state their name and address.
And do we have anyone this evening that wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we will move along with information. I believe we're going to have a presentation, Dr. Jessica Dane and Barbara Gonzalez, about exciting new career in tech ed pathway.
Well, good evening. I am very, very excited to be up here tonight to introduce some very special people. As you know, when we look at our vision statement of preparing students for their future, whether that be in our comprehensive high schools, OATC, our academies, you know, all of those programs in general, we really want to have industry at the table. And many of you have been involved as we started to work on our portrait of a graduate and then our strategic plan, and we have industry partners at the table because we know they're vital to help us know how we do actually prepare students for their future. And so I think last spring, a partnership started that we are super thrilled to have had the opportunity come our way. It's one that isn't offered anywhere else in Johnson County, and we are really excited to be partnering with our friends from Garmin. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our partners at Garmin and then Barbara Gonzalez to share with you this really exciting new pathway.
Well, good evening. First off, thank you guys so much for allowing us to come and present. I'm pretty excited about this and very, very passionate about Garmin and what we do. I'm Jennifer Pazulo. I'm one of our human resources managers. With me, I have Joe Kelly. He's one of our technical supervisors within our manufacturing area. And then I also have Katie Allgood, and I'm sorry, I'm going to talk really fast, but Katie's over our STEM outreach and some other recruitment efforts that we're doing. And we each want to kind of throw a few things at you, but I thought I would get you guys interactive with me this evening. So I have a little game to play. I've got four questions, eight words. You guys ready?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to give you two words, and I just want you guys to raise your hands for which you guys would choose. So bachelor's degree or associate's degree? All those for bachelors, raise your hand. All those for associates, raise your hand. Okay, well, all you bachelor's degrees, you guys are wrong, just so you know. How about my next two words? Blue collar or professional? Everybody for blue collar? Everybody for professional? Okay, well, you guys are professional, or you guys are wrong again, just so you know. How about my next one? Typing or troubleshooting? All those for typing? Anybody for troubleshooting? Now, nobody likes to type. How about my last one? Debt or no debt? So debt, anybody for debt? Okay, well, just to move forward a little bit, I want to present to you guys a little bit of our ideas and kind of explain to you. And I'm not surprised on the bachelor's and associate's degrees or the blue collar professional. I was downtown this morning, and I have been living this world with Joe, and we pulled Katie into it this last year. And I've been trying to win the lottery since before 2021, and it hasn't worked out so well for me, and you'll see why. But how did we get here? Our trades right now are at a huge shortage. We have the most fabulous jobs at Garmin, and I'm going to tell you, they don't require a bachelor's degree. And we pay really well. Your kids will come out of school, and they will have a great job in a controlled environment, heated, air-conditioned. It's so clean, you can eat off my floor. We just moved into a new manufacturing facility. It is fabulous. But we've been in a recession since 2010, and over the last about year and a half, we are really growing. We are one of the few electronics manufacturers that remained in Olathe. So if I back you up 12 years ago, when I posted a position for an electronics tech, I could handpick out of 50 people the top person to come into my job. Right now, I am lucky if I got 50 people to apply to these positions. We have a trade worker shortage. We're going to talk a lot about electronics techs. It's not just there. It's my electricians, my machinists, my plumbers. We're seeing it everywhere. I also have this aging population, which I'm going to talk a little bit further about. In addition, aviation market is up greatly. We are seeing some double digits in things. Garmin is growing at the speed of light. Compile that with our unemployment rate, and I'm sorry, I told this last week, it might be lower than this, but we're at 2.8%, lowest in 49 years. Everybody basically has a job right now. I am recruiting for hourly positions coast to coast, which is almost unheard of in Kansas City. What's our current state? I told you about 2021, why I wanted to win the lottery. 50% of my technicians are eligible for retirement. Every technician I've lost this year, 12 of them, have all been retirees. Everyone has been... Sure you don't want to work part-time? You sure you don't want to think about me in the future? We don't want to lose you. We don't have a pipeline. We have been working very, very diligently over the last three to four years to try to build this, and it is a huge struggle. I told you, we're recruiting techs all across there. We also have a competition to hire technicians. Now that manufacturing is coming back to the states, companies are growing. I told you about our unemployment rate. We are competing against people, and the reality is, I'm losing people for $15 and $20 more an hour for the same job, right here in Olathe. So we just opened our new manufacturing facility. Right now, I have 15 new openings at this moment, not counting any retirees. We have developed an associate's program that we work really, really, really closely with Johnson County, but we really want to partner with Olathe. And so going into our future state, we're going to talk a little bit. I'm going to show you. This is one of our techs right now. I might need help to get that to go.
My name is Thomas Baldwin. Most people call me Butch. I do electronics repair in the customer repair department and inspection. My role at Garmin is to repair customer returns that need either upgrades or ECOs, which are engineering change orders, to make them a better product and to repair any problems they might have with the piece of equipment. Anybody who's pursuing a career in electronics needs to, number one, be dedicated to their field, because you've got to continue to educate yourself as the years go by, because it is always changing. You've got to be able to upgrade yourself along with the equipment. Probably the most important things I've learned here are you've got to be meticulous in your job. You've got to be able to follow through each little item and be very conscientious of how you're going about doing your job, so that you're not wasting time. My favorite part about this job is this company. It's a great company, so people-oriented, and have so many perks and things going on for their employees. Just the way they go about doing things here is fantastic, and I love it.
So I've told you we're growing. So is our competition. Everybody needs these technicians. These are great jobs. They are great jobs for males, females, anyone that is coming up that maybe is a little bit better with their hands. We want to build this future pipeline. We want to not only support my growth and help me retire before 2021, but we want to fill these jobs locally. We want to make an impact in Olathe. We would love to bring some of the kids coming out of high school that may be a different program or a traditional route. I know I gave you the question in the beginning, bachelor's degree or associate's degree. It's interesting to talk about, because I grew up in a blue-collar family. My dad's HVAC, my brother's an electrician. My brother probably makes double what I make in salary. I don't think people realize what the trades pay. These are fantastic jobs. My brother is super smart in math. He is not a college student. He would have not done well in a bachelor's degree program, but these are fabulous jobs. And over the past few years, the stigma that's tied with them has been very challenging, and that's what we're trying to overcome. So anyway, we're estimating alone, we have a minimum of 15 jobs a year that we're going to fill, not even counting our estimated retirement and if we continue to grow over that time.
I was just going to talk to you for a couple of minutes about what are we looking for? Presenter's not clicking. There we go. And I had all kinds of problems. Pardon me. What are we looking for when we're talking about these ideal students, these ideal candidates, people who would go through a program like this? What we're looking for is, we're looking for someone who can mechanically understand something without necessarily being able to see it, okay? Mechanic, be able to go, look at data, look at data sheets. There we go. Look at data, look at data sheets, people who want to work with their hands, people who want to tinker, people who can comprehend, understand, and communicate back to those who need to know about this. It is, and we traditionally had seen a lot of this training in the military. However, they've changed. Their notion of how much in-depth they're going to get into the electronics has changed. These aren't people who are just hooking something up and getting a diagnostic code. These are people who are going down into a component level, putting probes down and understanding how it works and diagnosing problems. When we talk about developing this pipeline, what we're talking about is that Garmin will sponsor a lab. We feel, from the experience that we've had, that you can simulate a lab, you can show that to students, but they do not retain that knowledge unless they have that hands-on experience, where they're prototyping. I say prototyping, but they're building circuits on a breadboard, they're putting probes down, they're looking at it, and they're relating it back to the math that they learn, because it reinforces that. They've done the math, now they see what the results of that math is right there in front of them. We will also, we also want to partner with Johnson County Community College. We have people who are currently on their advisory committee, and we've actually had a wonderful relationship with them for several years now. As a matter of fact, their program is probably the best program in the area. There's none other, we drive hours to find people who have programs that are comparable. These are basic electronics classes, the first, basically the first five classes that you would get at Johnson County. And we're also looking for a personal learning experience for these students, where they can come to Garmin. They won't directly work on sellable product. We do have some FAA oversight, but they will come and they will work with electronics and be with our folks. And upon graduation, once they get their high school diploma, we anticipate that they will have their first year of college completed and be able to go straight into Johnson County, come through hopefully as an apprentice for us, depending on our bandwidth or what we can accept, and then complete that associate's degree in one year and be ready for our workforce. Thank you. I'm going to switch over to Kate.
Yeah, so how are we going to, how are we going to get there for this? So we recognize that this is definitely a take-a-village thing that we're proposing here, and it's also kind of challenging the norm. But we think that really this type of a program can really help these students that maybe aren't on that typical four-year degree path find a ton of success. So there's going to be a lot of parent support that's needed, teacher support, support from the board, and it will lead to a great opportunity to support the trades. And then what's Garmin also going to provide with this? Well, educational reimbursement. You know, they can go and do this two-year degree program, come work at Garmin, and if they want to continue on with that four-year degree program, we're going to help pay them to do that. There's also excellent benefits at Garmin. So I know not many high school students maybe are thinking about great retirement packages, but some of you in this room probably are, right? And so you can help sell your students on the great benefits package that we have at Garmin. And, oops, sorry. And we recognize that, you know, this is something that we really see a value to the greater community. Yes, we think it's going to be awesome for Garmin, but we're not the only ones, as Jen mentioned, that are looking for people to fill these positions. And so we think that this will benefit just the greater Kansas City community as a whole, help support our students, help provide them with opportunities that maybe they hadn't even thought were a possibility for them, and do that locally. And we're really excited to help, you know, contribute to the economy here, rather than those students going and finding those positions in other communities or other states. We really believe, you know, the success of Garmin's going to be determined by our ability to create superior products, and these technicians are so important to that. And we think that they just would have an opportunity to be a part of an incredible team and really find an awesome path at Garmin. So with that, do we, or do we have any questions, I think?
I'm going to talk just real briefly about the curriculum and how we are going to be using the courses. So just to kind of give you a little background, the Kansas State Department of Education this year added three new pathways. One of those pathways is the Aviation Maintenance Pathway with an avionics strand, and it falls underneath the transportation cluster. So when Garmin came to us looking to help build the pipeline for the future workforce, we thought that this particular pathway was a perfect fit. As you can see, that the courses that I have highlighted here represent the electronics courses that would be available for the students. And so it seemed to be almost a perfect fit for what we were looking at. So we worked with Johnson County Community College to help provide a sequence of courses that would align to their associate's degree in electronics technology. And so the charts that you see here represent what the students would take for their first and second years in the program at Olathe Advanced Technical Center as juniors and then as seniors. And so all of the competency profile documents are available for review as well. And then students who successfully complete the two-year program at OATC have the ability to earn 22 college credit hours through Johnson County Community College. All of these courses do qualify for the Excel and CTE, which means that they are tuition-free. So essentially, students would come out debt-free with half of their associate's degree already fulfilled. And so at OATC right now, currently, we have six programs. At the end of this year, we are retiring our Echo program as it phases into the 21st Century Academies Future Educators Academy. And so we feel like this new program is a good fit as the one program phases out. And so Aviation Electronics, as we're going to be calling it with the avionics focus, is going to be located at West Dennis Support Center, along with our Construction Trades Program that is already housed over there. And so we are really excited about this new pathway and the partnership that we're developing with Garmin and Johnson County Community College, and we really think that it's a way to help provide an opportunity for students to prepare them for their future. So thank you.
I just want to add one note. They were very humble in saying this. They are actually donating all of the classroom equipment to us. So we will have their equipment set up in the classroom, so as the kids go through OATC, they will have that opportunity to be tuition-free and have 22 hours of college credit, and then this awesome opportunity to have internships and then eventually have a career at Garmin. So we're very excited. Any questions that we can have our guests answer for you?
When this is running full speed, about how many students do we expect to be participating?
Well, I think we had talked about originally, Joe, and correct me if I'm wrong, potentially we could take up to 12. We haven't expanded this as much as we would like to, because we also have engineering technicians and we have some other areas that have needs, so we think we have some potential for more. We just didn't want to commit to too many right off the bat. However, I can give you handfuls of names of my competitors that would be jumping at this. And since we've talked to Olathe, word on the streets kind of gotten out, and I mean, we have literally had everybody, we've had schools knocking down our door to say, what can we do to get this going? We had the recent Aviation Summit, just to tie onto this, and a couple of our aviation vendors were there, and they were talking about their need for technicians. And I was like, can you please be quiet? Do not take any of our techs. We can't lose anybody. So the need is greater even outside of our area. At the Manufacturing Summit I was at this morning, which was focused on trades, which is surprising, because I thought I was still behind catching up to this, because I knew we were going to have a need. I didn't know it was going to be quite as large as it is. But what I see with this program is we are three to four years ahead of some of these other places that are struggling for people. And this is, this is almost record-breaking, because they are talking about, gosh, we don't know how to get to the students, we don't know how to get into the trades, and we're already to the point that we're hoping to have this in production soon. And so, I mean, we're really making some pathways of something that's not done. We haven't seen it done anywhere in Kansas, so this would be really exciting, too, for Olathe as well. And I think we've missed some of that VOTech over the last few years, because they've gotten away from that. And I think there's a lot of kids that this is a great path for them to do as well. Not only would it help us fill our positions, too.
And if I could just add real quickly, that what we do in the manufacturing and repair department, that electronics technician position is also mirrored in our engineering... department, that electronics technician position is also mirrored in our engineering department. It's the same pay scale, very similar career path that they are. So all we really need is a good push to get some verbal agreements, and I think we certainly could take more than 12 on any given year.
And then maybe just to tie in, I know they would come out of high school debt-free as well. We've also, as we've been working with Johnson County for several years, we have several part-time apprentices, and if they maintain 20 hours a week and they're actually working on our products, they also eligible for tuition reimbursement. So we went back to Garmin, and I'll be honest, we're a very engineering-based company, and we've got them to approve that if they're in our registered associates programs and they're working 20 hours a week. Our president, he knows the need that we need techs because we do it all here at Garmin, and so that's probably the uniqueness, and we want to keep that here, and we want to be able to be that fast electronics company that can respond because we can repair it. And unless we have these techs, we can't do that. But for them to come out virtually, they will have no debt, and to explain to some of these kids, like, oh, my gosh, you're going to come out at $40,000. I didn't start out with $40,000 a year when I graduated with my bachelor's degree, so, and I had all this student loans. So, I mean, I think those are great selling points to let the kids know along with the benefits, but I'm going to be honest, they don't care about the benefits at this point. They want to know, what's my paycheck? How am I going to get this? And it's just a great avenue. And within a year after them graduating school, they have a trade, and it's a wanted trade.
And I noticed the classes start in 11th grade, so kids wouldn't have to make this decision until their sophomore year?
Right. So this would be the same as our other programs at OATC. So we actually are starting to market the programs to our seventh and eighth graders. OATC does a great job, and even now pushing into the elementary school. But students would have even their freshman and sophomore years in high school before they would decide, and then they would apply during their sophomore year to go into it at the junior.
This is amazing. And what I like about it, it keeps the kids we've educated in our communities. And I mean, that's a win-win. So thank you, and thanks for the equipment, for the classrooms, and this great partnership. Thrilled about it.
Yeah, thank you for letting us speak here. We're excited.
Yeah, I'd add the same, and I see Nancy Ingram back there. Kudos to Johnson County Community College on their continued partnership with us, too, because that's a huge piece with the whole partnership package. And I was curious if we have many other companies to this extent that we're working closely with to this extent in any of our other...
We are working on that. We have a lot of them that we ask to come and sit on our panels and in our advisory groups, but this is the first time we've had an industry come to us. And word is out that they're doing that, and so now other industries are trying to grow their pipeline as well, and we are just happy as can be to watch.
When I was at this meeting today, I think you could see this grow into something of, you could bring electricians and plumbers and machinists, and there is that much need and that much support. I mean, it's astronomical what people have right now. I mean, the table I was sitting at with 10 people between us and the trades, we had over 100 positions at our table of seven.
Yeah, I hear you, Ellen. Great, thank you.
That's great. Any other questions? Thank you so much. We appreciate this and the partnership. Moving along, the consent agenda. Is there any questions, anything anyone would like to pull off of this? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to accept action items 5.01 to 5.15.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Shear, second by Mr. Geary.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
All right, moving along. Section six, bids, contracts, and other agreements. Looks like we've got four of them here. Any questions or anything anyone would like to discuss? If not...
We approve action items 6.01 through 6.05 as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McCune, a second by Ms. Martin.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Okay. Section seven, looks like we had something that came up a little bit late, so it wasn't a future action item. Student trip for Olathe East Band to St. Louis. Any questions on this one?
As the parent, the parent of a former Olathe East Band member, I would move that we approve action item 7.01, student trip Olathe East Band to St. Louis.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Ms. Felter.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Decent list of future action items. Hope everyone had a chance to take a look at the written information as well. Any topics for discussion from the board? Seeing none? Mr. Allison, any comments first?
Yes, just a couple this evening. Want to thank everyone that was able to participate in our first conversation on developing the Portrait of a Graduate. And as we've talked about, being able to start with the end in mind and then being able to use that to develop our strategic plan moving forward. We have our next meeting on October 30th. A lot of great conversation, and I think we'll be able to narrow down six to six competencies or so and have our Portrait of a Graduate ready to bring back to you all in November for discussion and approval as we move forward. It's already occurred, but I want to say special thank you to Teen Substance Prevention Evening that was held at the beginning of the month. Tim Brady helped organize that along with Assistant DA Don Hymer and two of our SROs, Andy Falcon and Jamie Schmidt, being able to provide information to parents, and it included everything from substance abuse and drugs to vaping and a number of topics. Very well attended, and I've had numerous comments by parents that attended complimenting the quality of the presentations, but the information and how valuable they found that to be. So a lot of work to put one of those evenings together, and I wanted to thank those individuals. I think that tonight, what the presentation we saw with our Garmin partners as well, as you look at the Wall of Honor recipients and just over and over the way the community comes together to support our schools, and also values the contribution our schools make to the quality and the overall fabric of our community. And it seems like there's a board meeting that goes by or something almost every month that just shines that example again. So last, congratulations to our Wall of Honor winners. As you looked at their bios, it's pretty amazing what they've contributed both in the past and continue to contribute to our school system in the future. So thanks to each of them. That concludes my remarks.
Excellent, thank you, John. Executive session, looks like we have two. How long are you thinking we need?
10 minutes. First one, 10.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
I move that the board go into executive session on purpose of discussing salary benefits and related items of the bargaining unit pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 7:50.
6:50.
6:50.
6:50.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Shear, a second by Mr. Geary.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.